We need to come to our committee meetings tonight. We don't have a very long agenda, but we will get started. George, do you have anything you want to bring?
Okay.
Mitch, I think it's all yours.
Financial report for committee. The chief has approached us with a...oh, by the way, we'll do that budget. We've got copies of the current budget of 2016 to review prior to council. Kind of looking at it from a high angle, not too much detail. Still waiting on insurance to come in, and we're expecting that any day right now.
Yes.
I will have projected numbers. I've already got them in. That's what you're seeing there is that projected line that you guys didn't have previously.
Right.
I'll have all the detail uploaded to Google Docs, probably this evening or tomorrow.
This is through, through September?
Through, through last month.
No, through August.
August.
Through August. Okay, so one of us got to see September. September should be prior to council.
Yeah, it'll be within the next week. Some of those will have to be estimated, obviously, because we don't have some of those numbers that will...
But we will have that prior to next council, right?
Right.
I can comment. I don't draft a lot, but the last few times we've gotten these when we walked in. If we could get these ahead of time so we could review when we walk in, we'd feel a lot better with the numbers we're getting, but when we don't get them until we walk in, it makes it really hard to make...
That's just been the budget. All the others have been uploaded to Google Docs. Should have been two or three days previous.
I don't know that...
I haven't gotten one.
Oh, then I have all these.
I don't know if my Google Docs is messed up or not.
I don't know. I do get them, and sometimes they are, but sometimes they're not. Yeah, just...I check it up often, so I try to make sure I'm up on it before I come into meetings, but...
I haven't been putting financial statements even here. Usually you guys don't get those here. I usually just upload those to Google Docs. That's just the budget part.
And you email when you do that, so I'm pretty aware when you get those, but it just seems like there's... And then with the budget, it'd be nice to be able to have an overture ahead of time so we can keep looking over it so that we get to where we have any questions.
Nothing really different on that, other than just the projected numbers from this year. So everything's...it's all just that one line that you're going to be sent.
We pretty well got the budget done, except for that one, one item, and we may be researching it.
Yeah, I guess for me, and I can't speak for anybody but me, but if I could just even see more detail of everything but that one item, because that's just one plugged-in item, I know it would change a few variables, but at least we got an idea of whatever it was.
Yeah, I gave them that detail. I feel nothing's changed since then.
Okay, nothing's changed in that one, but even that took a little while to get.
Yeah, even that took a little while to get, right? And to that point, all of these things, the ordinance or the resolution on the millage, things like that, would help to get them early, obviously, so that we can ask questions.
Y'all got the draft that I sent out?
Yeah.
Okay, okay. Some of you sent me a re-received document, so...
The only ordinance we've got so far in drafts is spoken to.
Right.
It's in your...
I emailed you.
Do you want...do you want, yeah, just go ahead and send all that stuff out, Phil? Instead of you trying to do that, you send it to Jeff. Let's let Jeff do that instead.
I don't care who sends it, but it just seems like they're...
He more or less downloads all those docs. He's got them all, yeah.
No, he'll lock up his...he'll lock up his email now to try to send them to us. He just needs to...
Yeah, no, it's...
He needs us to head to him and download his Google Docs.
And again, I think one of those issues is getting it, you know...
Two or three days in advance.
Two or three days in advance.
Very much so.
Okay, let me ask you, and I'm not being argumentative, but the purpose of this meeting is to be an informal meeting for you guys to discuss anything you want to.
Right.
So do you want us to shut off the agenda early? I mean, do you want us to shut the agenda off two or three days ago? You know what I mean? I mean, I think some of these things, like right now, we don't, we didn't get until we just get...
I didn't get an agenda today until I sent an email to Christine in regards to this evening, understanding, you know, there may have been some reasons. I have no problem with that. However, let's go ahead and get an agenda out, at least is what we have, by Monday before we meet on Thursday. And I'm just throwing that out for an example. By Monday before we meet on Thursday and...
You think we could get it Wednesday before?
I think Christine and I had a problem because she told me she had sent it to me, and I didn't get it.
But if you've got additions, deletions, or corrections before we sit down and meet, we can update it when you start the meeting.
But that's what I'm saying. I mean, that's the purpose of the committee meeting, is to be informal, but if you want to be more formal, we can do the deadline.
It's not that we want to be formal, we want to be more informed.
Yeah, because I don't know what I'm...I don't know what I'm bringing up. I don't know what I'm wanting to even discuss about with the ready...because that's what I feel like committee meetings were, is for us to be able to have this discussion, and it's hard to have a discussion when I'm seeing for the first time, they're trying to read through it, well, hang on, let me read for a few more minutes before I hit it.
Yeah.
So I'd rather have that ahead of time, read through it two or three times, than to walk in and say, okay, now I know what I'm discussing.
Who's not getting their doc? Who's not...
She's the only one I think not getting her Google Doc. Oh, you're not either?
Don't use this meeting as a deal, because I was gone last week, and we've had a breakdown this week. I did not get it.
Can we get somebody to do that in your place if you have to be gone?
Well, you should have got an agenda, period.
I do.
Never got one until this afternoon.
Yeah, I didn't get an agenda either.
I sent an email to Christine this afternoon. CC Jeff. I got an agenda before I walked in the door.
I sent it to my office.
I'll take mine for it.
Yeah, I just received mine.
Normally, she sends it to me, and I upload it to you guys and put it on Google Docs. I can't find where I ever received it.
James, did you get one?
Yeah.
Yeah. When did you get yours?
I was going to say it was probably Monday.
It may be my computer.
Because I know that's when we discussed...
They're supposed to have mine typically.
I never got one, so...
I got my test run here on one. You got yours Monday?
I will just start emailing you out in a bulk message and let you know that everything's been uploaded, and if you haven't, if you haven't received an email from me a day or two before your meeting, then call me.
That's easiest. That way, it doesn't lock up the system as well. We can go to Google Docs and look.
Right. Okay, I'm going to tell you, at this meeting, we will be sending out an agenda for next week's meeting tomorrow, so if you have not received that by Monday, call the office so we've got some kind of glitch in our program or something. Because we usually try to send out agendas either Friday or Monday before the...
They confronted us.
I'm pretty sure the glitch this week was me.
Well, even about next week's meeting, I only knew about it because a word of mouth, and then the paper posted about it.
Well, you wouldn't have got it.
We haven't sent one yet. But I kind of felt like we should have sent an official email, so there would have been a special meeting when we knew about it, but, you know, I know about it because of everything else.
Of course, I...I want...the norm is Friday or Monday. That's the norm.
That's the problem.
Because sometimes we had to wait to Monday if we haven't got certain information. Are we going to put on that agenda? And sometimes we might wait till Monday.
And I get that as far as, as far as the normal agenda. That's perfectly fine, but I guess what I'm saying is, we knew there was going to be a special meeting. Some of us travel having that information so that we would know that, you know, we need to reroute our...so we'll be at that special meeting. That would have been nice, say, hey, we'll send out a agenda later, but just to tidy your calendars, here's just a little information on, we're going to have a special meeting on the 16th. Are the tickets available?
I'll get it better on Facebook.
Yeah.
I've got better communication, but I hope, I hope I can for...
Facebook.
Whatever it is.
Anyway, sorry, Mitch.
Oh, that's okay. Like I say, this is informal. We can talk. The thing I need to bring up to the committee, the next thing, is the, an issue with fire department. In our budget, we have $50,000 budgeted for dispatch, fire dispatch. We've only spent, so far this year, $16,000, so we're going to be significantly under budget. The chief wants to buy some radios, to upgrade some of the radios into the department, and in our radio account, we only have $2,000 budgeted, and we haven't spent any. So we'd like to transfer $12,000 of the 50 in dispatch, amend the budget, take $12,000 out of, we get out of dispatch and put that $12,000 in radiance. And I'll let him give the details as to the equipment.
To be for walkie-talkies, our handheld, we have, we purchased them, I'm not sure, it's been several years ago, five or six years ago, and they're starting to have problems. And so we thought, got prices and got the ones like what we've got, it'd be $800 apiece, and I'd like to get 10 of them. And then we've got, we've only got two of the AWIN, or one of the AWIN radios, the walkie-talkies. We've got one walkie-talkie and one mobile, or vehicle. I'd like to get two more of them. The AWIN is a statewide communication for any disasters, and plus, we go to, oh, in Newton County and different places for rescues, and we don't have radio communication, and just let us have communication back to see if you're wherever with them. So that's what, I'd like to have.
$12,000 towed, because the tow comes about 10, nine, but there'll be some subs, taxes, charges. And again, this is more procedural. Budget amount, we have to amend it. We're just commending the budget.
At least $22,000 in...
No, well...
You said we spent 16?
We spent 16.
Out of 50?
Out of 50.
$34,000, less 12, is going to leave us $22,000 in funds?
That's right.
Is that enough for the rest of the year?
Yes, we're averaging about, roughly about $2,000 a month.
And that, that one, that...
So we're going to be under budget at the end of the year in that account.
That one was one-time expense. That was our recording.
Yeah, it started, say, the one-time expense of that $16,000, 13 of it was one expenditure.
I have no objection to it whatsoever. Knowing, knowing the value of the AWIN's radios because of what I did before, do we have an opportunity to maybe get one or two more, besides what we're thinking? I'm telling you, I'm telling you, unless you've been in a disaster and you've been completely without power, we're coming into that time of the year, AWINs is the ultimate communication system across the entire state of Arkansas.
The chief and I had that discussion. He's been frugal, and I told him one of my concerns, anytime in our last disaster we've had here, we've been fortunate communities like Bologna and Moore, Oklahoma, who've had major catastrophes. If we ever have that here, we have no backup. We have no shelters. We have no place with a generator that you could take 500 or 1,000 people.
Well, we do. Yes, we most certainly do.
Well, I guess...
National Guard aren't around, though. We have, we housed 400 people in that last ice cream.
But it, but it's not a, is it a FEMA structure?
Yes, most of it is.
That's great. That's great. I wasn't aware of that.
With generators and everything else up and operating. But I mean, I'm not, but my point is, is, you know, communication, especially when you're down, and I mean, when the city goes black because the power goes down, the entire city goes black, it's a pretty humbling experience to come through downtown. And when you can't communicate with the world, let alone off cell phones, we're talking about health, period. So I'm all in favor of, I just, one or two more of the AWIN's radios would be nuts, but I don't know what they cost. I have no idea.
$2,900 apiece for the cheapest version.
I don't know what your, how good any of the cheapest ones...
Prices range from $2,900 to $5,500, according to the chief, and we're buying the least expensive model to get to them.
Something we can look at based on the budget for next year, too.
I had that discussion, too.
I mean, we're in a position, you know, especially with, as, with fire equipment in regards to the sales tax also, that this is the kind of thing they can look at, so...
I need a motion?
So do.
Second.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
I was just going to say, do we want to add more for a couple more than AWIN radios with this? I'm sure that that in there before you voted on that.
That's okay. And seriously, it's okay, because we can come back, but what I would suggest is, since we're going with a lesser, a lesser, in electronics, typically, you get for what you pay. And that's what, and even though $2,900 sounded like a lot of money, you still get for what you pay. So let's see how these $2,900 run, see how they perform. We can always come back.
Is the bottom of the line, equipment going to function for you this long?
That I do not know.
Yeah.
You know, I was just, I went with the lowest one, just to try to get what we could for our bucks, you know? I hope it lasts. I hope it's what we need, but further than knowing, I do not know.
Let's see, let's see what they do.
Okay. All right. Sorry to interrupt.
No, no. Got it off. So we'll move that on to council.
Okay, speaking of that item, we do not have to amend the budget. We only have to have an up and down, down vote to move it, to move it to another line item, and then we will, at the end of the year, or first next year, we will have a amended budget to vote.
For all items.
For all items.
That's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Bill, do you have anything?
No, sir, not at this time.
Okay, Mary Jean, you're up.
Well, I have a lady here that would like to speak about the vicious dogs. It is your floor.
Thank you. First, I want to, I have some handouts here that I want to leave to council. Person along, I want you to look at picture here of what happened to one of my neighbor's I have my neighbors here with me, Peggy Snyder, Peggy Rogers, and her daughter. Peggy Rogers is the lady that her dog got attacked.
What's that step, Joyce?
A little trap on the swing. This is what happened to her little dog, and I think we need to upgrade and redo the ordinance on vicious dogs, there, ma'am.
Thank you.
Be one for Johnny, too.
I want each one of y'all to look at those pictures because it's heartbreaking what I'm here to address the city of Harrison on a very important matter, vicious dog in our neighborhood of Ozart Meadows. No resident should feel threatened to go out into their yard by someone's dog running loose. The city of Harrison has an ordinance on file number 1208 concerning dogs, but this desperately needs to be revised and enforced. The state of Arkansas also has a statute, number 2019102, which specifically reads, "Any person knowing that any dog has killed or is about to catch, injure, or kill any domesticated animal shall have the right to kill the dog without in any way feeling liable to the owner of the dog in any court of the state of Arkansas." A resident of Ozart Meadows, Tony Honings, has three vicious dogs, and they attacked Peggy Rogers' small Yorkshire terrier on the night of September the 11th, severely injuring her. This attack occurred at approximately 10:15 PM, as the little dogs were going outside to the bathroom. This small dog never stood a chance with these dogs, and would have been killed if Peggy had not been able to knock them off of her dog. Little Bridget, she has had to undergo surgery. She has had broken ribs, puncture wounds, hernias. I mean, it's a miracle that little dog survived, and this incident should never have happened. We have called the police numerous, numerous times out into our neighborhood, and nothing has been done to these dogs. They are a constant threat to this neighborhood, whether it is in the daytime or nighttime. I have a little schnauzer. I fear for my life every night when I take her out to the bathroom before we go to bed, because I never know if these dogs are going to be out. Tonight, we are here asking the council to please study the handouts that I have given and to rectify this situation before one of the residents isn't able to outrun these dogs and is violently injured like Bridget was, or possibly killed. I urge you council members to speak with any of my neighbors if you would like to hear about all of the encounters that we have endured with these dogs, validating the fear that has been imposed upon us. Folks, it's bad out there. I love dogs. I hate these dogs, and I could kill them in a New York minute, because it's not right to live in fear in your yard, not knowing if you can go out and be safe. And please, I beg of you, please do something. Upgrade, upgrade your ordinance. Make it a severe crime to where somebody, if they have a bad dog, they keep that dog locked in a backyard and never threatening people. That's all I have to say. Any questions?
Those pictures. George, where did you get this last paint?
What was it?
Get that off the tape?
Off of the internet? I sure did. And that's a state dog. And you know, folks, they say you can't shoot a gun in the city limits, but I'll be all, if I let that dog kill my little schnauzer or chew my leg off, it won't happen. I will kill the dog. But we need something done. Thank you.
Thank you, George. Do you mind getting...
Do you have any response?
Well, Mr. Horn has decided more than once, where his dogs at large, we're following policy best we can, he's paid his fines. All we can do is, we go back out, our officer's already been told, he will be physically arrested next time, and brought down here to bond out, setting such as issue ticket. If you guys would like us to do something more...
Is there a possibility, and have you checked into the possibility of the animal control, working alternate nights, one night a week? Like, because everyone knows what time he goes home. And if I have a bad dog, I'm going to let him out since that time when the control man's gone.
We have looked into switching his hours around a little bit, yes.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Chief, what's our current, current ordinance on dogs? Do you know?
Yes.
Yeah, you can't have a dog that barks unreasonably. You can't have a dog off the leash, out of your yard. Has to have a rabies shot and have it attached to him. Other than that, that's about it when it comes to dogs.
What's the punishment of the fine, or...
I believe it's either 65 or 85 per offense. Now, that'll be a lot of pain before they go to court, and when they go to court, that'd be something up in court what they charge. I don't know if they charge more or not. That'd be more of...
It's the 65-plus court cost, which is usually around 90. 150, 55.
I thought Mr. Honings, chief, I thought Mr. Honings was supposed to go to court yesterday, and why did he not? You told me and my neighbors that he would have to appear in court.
Yes. It was documented in the computer, a mustappear ticket. He came in Saturday, and our dispatcher took the fines without looking at the computer. We've already disciplined dispatcher, their people. I don't know what, I mean, it was a mistake. Normally, the dispatcher has never seen a dog at large, ticket go mustappear, so she never checked the computer. She just took the money. Once we learned about it Monday, we disfund her, and we made sure that from now on, they will check every ticket with database, read anything similar.
How's the dogs doing now?
Oh, you know, he has told the police several occasions when they have been out, "Oh, my dogs didn't get out, they're lying." This one policeman came to me, and he said, "Joyce, you're lying." He said, he said his dogs weren't out. I said...
How are they, is he letting them out the front door?
He's letting, I guarantee you, he's letting them out the front door.
Do we have proof of it?
Have you been letting them out the front door?
Is there a picture or video proving that he is opening his front door and letting the dogs run out? I'm just asking a question.
No, I mean, I don't have proof of how they're getting out. Well, once, he said they were crawling, they were opening the window and crawling out the window.
Well, I know...
Can you see a dog opening a window and crawling out?
You know, there's dogs digging out in some of these, you know, something like that, and I was just wondering if that was the case.
He's, he's not, he's not digging out under the fence. I swear.
Saying, do you know, is there a prison inspector on this?
Yes. I think he, I think he's opening the door and letting them out.
I know there's a white pit bull that runs loose in my neighborhood, but he's never shown any aggressive tendencies. And I've called in with him a couple of times, but they've always come and taken him back.
I don't have any problem, and I animal control officer, Rick has been good. He has come every time we have called. I have no problem with Rick, but, you know, the night that this little Bridget got attacked, you know, they should have taken those dogs away from him that night. I don't care if Rick wasn't on duty, they should have taken those dogs. What they did to that little dog was outrageous. And I mean, for three days, Peggy had to hold that little dog because she couldn't lay down with her broken ribs. And, you know, she's gone through a lot, and if it'd been my little dog, I would have killed these dogs that night. You may have packed me the chisel, but I would have bought it out, but...
Oh, believe me, I'm...
But I would have rid of those dogs that night.
I haven't been him, and he got out, and I had just had a wreck, and I was out walking the streets trying to find that dog, so I totally know...
You know what I'm talking about.
The anxious, stress, anxiety, fear that you go through. So believe me, I completely understand.
And I beg of y'all, please do something to your ordinance, and get this man's attention and tell him, "Man, your dogs get out one more time, they're history, they're gone. You've lost them." Because I don't think it's fair to residents of Ozart Meadows to live in that fear. I do not.
Not to disregard that specific area, but how many of these calls do we have in the whole city?
We get quite a few dog calls, dogs at large.
Any, any with this type of instance?
We occasionally have dogs bite other dogs. I mean, obviously, they can bite people, and we go up and, if they bite a human, we can seize the dog for 10 days. The ordinance doesn't allow us to do anything that bites an animal, only a human.
Okay. Joyce, if you don't mind, after we get done, I'd like to talk to you.
Yes, ma'am. I'll be here.
I just want to get some of your information so I can...
And Mr. Horn, just before you ask us to do something, what would be your suggestion of what you'd like to see the revision be?
I think you're, monetarily, I think your fines should be steeper. I mean, that's, that's cheerio, you know? If your dog gets out and attacks another dog, I think it should be more cost to somebody. I think possibly three strikes and you're out, you know? First time, it's so much, next time, double it. Third time, you lose your dogs. They're gone, they're history. You know, and if you put that in somebody's mind, "Hey, man, you know, I better get control of this dog, because it's going to eventually, it's going to really cost me."
If, let's just do a case scenario here. Say, this is done, and this is the police go get a... Say this is done, and this is the police go get a vicious dog. Where do you recommend we take it?
Well, if it's me, I'd take it out of the country and I'd...
Well, it's probably a little human, but no, I mean, where would, where would you want us to take it, to the Humane Society and then let them take care of it? Would you want us, I mean, what, what do you think would happen to, what should happen to the dog, other than your suggestion? What should happen to the dog?
I don't know what the Humane Society would take a mean dog like that. I mean, these dogs are mean, folks, I'm not kidding.
But if you want us to remove the dog, where would you suggest we take it? I mean, you have, you have a partial solution.
Well, what does...
Well, I understand that, but we're not gonna kill the dog.
What, what does our ordinance say in regards to a dog attacking a human? And we take the dog, we take the dog for ten days? Where?
It depends on the dog and the circumstances. It can be taken to either a vet, where the owner is responsible for that dog, to upkeep for ten days. If the person is, what we believe has the way to keep the dog pinned, we may allow them to keep the dog himself. It all depends on circumstances. But normally, we try to take it to a vet, and they'll keep it for ten days, so they can care for it for those ten days.
I read meters for APNL for thirty years. I was bit five times in that thirty years. And twice, when I got bit, dogs had to go to the vet for two weeks because they had not been vaccinated for rabies. Well, I sweated blood for two weeks. I think that would probably be the best place, let them have to pay a boarding fee and slap a big fine on them, and you know, they get fined several times, they might decide to get rid of their dog themselves, instead of a neighbor having to do it.
Well, Ms. Turney, I think, I thank you for coming. And I think getting with Alderman Taylor here would be great, because I think she chairs our ordinance, and so to look over that, see what our options are. I can't promise what we will do, but at least drafting something that would be submitted. Right now, you're gonna slot information, but we have nothing to move upon. So the only thing we can do is start there, if you would like to revise and relook at the ordinance, we need to start with that, what you would like to see, and then we can submit that, and they can make changes to an actual something. Right now, we just have information, but we don't have anything that we're looking forward to moving on. So I think that's a great place to start, is meeting with us.
Well, let's say approximately, cause our dog is going to the vet.
Can you watch, watch it, it's been about six hundred, six hundred dollars so far.
Has there been any reimbursement from the owner?
He paid part of it.
How much?
Uh, he paid, uh, let's see, he's paid about three hundred and something.
He's paid approximately half of the vet bill. Will there be an additional vet bill?
Yes. Well, so far, he's paid, I don't know whether they will or not, we'll just have to see how she does.
The dog, at this point, is fairly recovered from their, from her injuries.
Yes.
Joyce, are these dogs attacked by the pit bull?
One is a three-legged pit bull, one is a pit Saint Bernard cross, and that's the one that is super, super dangerous. And I don't know what that third dog is either. I think it's a cur, but they're all three big dogs. And that Saint Bernard dog, I bet that thing weighs thirty-four pounds.
I just did some quick research across the state, there's lots of cities that's got pit bull organisms in place, lots. However, you know, we need, we need to look into, uh...
Well, one thing I would suggest is, not to, to try and get too detailed, but if we're gonna do anything in regard to previous discussion with ordinances in the Humane Society, probably licensing or, you know, fees here in the city, we need to put all of that in our ordinance.
Somehow put it together.
Yeah.
I'll pull up some ordinances, and I will communicate with you.
You want my cell phone number?
Yeah, that's what I was gonna get from that.
Three, six, five, three, five, nine, one.
You'll be a lot of calls, yeah, that's the one right there.
I don't care, I'll talk, I'll talk. Thank you.
Are you, any ordinance?
Well, we had a perpetual pair meeting today at noon, we'll be having another one October the nineteenth at twelve o'clock. From your always open meeting, if you're interested in going.
When was that?
October the nineteenth will be our next meeting. We had good participation today in several matters.
Got anything else?
No.
Thank you.
But then I forgot.
Wade said he misses you all, good time, he's coaching football right now, and he said he has nothing to bring forward to the council.
Is he winning?
I don't know if he's winning. I think he's practicing.
Okay, Dean.
Mary Jean, were you gonna talk about the cookout?
No, they, everyone's gotten their instructions of what they're bringing for our cookout on October the sixteenth for the blaze fire.
You crack the whip for all of us now?
Oh, dear, I didn't get a communication on that there.
You're bringing the birthday cake for Mary Jean.
That's right. I want a big birthday cake and lots of candles.
Well, it's gonna have to be a big one for all the handles, I'm just saying.
It's gonna be at the fire station, so we can put all them candles on it.
I'm so glad she didn't hear me.
Did you have a fire?
Is our fire insurance paid? Anyway, it will be from seven to nine, and we are giving the police, the fire, and City Hall, and special guests. I guess that means the mayor.
Okay, the first thing on the agenda that I have is the no smoking ordinance. I've tried to send it out, first draft, to everybody earlier this week. Van has typed it up to make it all legal. He did add on, I don't know if you've got front and back copy or two pages, but section four, this is going to replace the ordinance number thirteen forty-two that we originally had. And what this is gonna do is it's going to include all city-owned and maintained city parks and sports facilities inside the city limits of Harrison. And this is also gonna include electronic cigarettes and electronic nicotine devices called Ns. And Patrick, do you wanna say a couple words real quick, just to tell us a couple things about, some things that we had talked about earlier, just briefly?
I'd answer, happy to answer any questions we have on us. If it helps facilitate, help the community, and if it's your choice, I'd be more than happy to do everything in my power to provide signage in the parks to help notify. And so I believe Alderman Magnus also has a plan in that regard at the entrances of parks to make the public fully aware as well of the new policy. This is something that is a result of a culture change, if you will. All over the state, municipalities are changing the organization, what's called comprehensive, and cover their parks. Valley Springs, just a couple weeks ago, changed and jumped on board, voted unanimously to have their park. They even want to potentially be inclusive to cover all city-owned property. That is a big move for them. Berryville has had one reading on theirs, as of a couple days ago, Tuesday, I believe, and is proceeding, that also has unanimous support. Whereas, it's decided in public places at least, that one's desire to smoke does no longer trump someone's desire for health. And this is where our children congregate, and they see the hand mount. Secondhand smoke is a real issue, upwards of ten percent death rate as a result of all tobacco use. And there is also even thirdhand smoke. I'd be happy to answer questions on that, but that should bring us up to speed. This is not my ordinance, this is not something I desire, this is something I've educated the Alderman on and have educated other communities on to follow suit if they so desire.
The ones that are not on the committee, did you have any questions for Patrick regarding the ordinance?
I do.
Okay.
Regarding the, the signage, are you gonna get with Wade on that, or are the rep?
Well, what's gonna happen in regards to signage? It's the signage that he can provide, can't have anything else on it. The signage that I'm gonna propose that the city produces will be, obviously, at city expense, but that the council understands it. And it will list all the ordinances and major fines, the maximum fines for fireworks and for this ordinance at major entrances. So we wouldn't have, you know, twenty of those signs, we might only have five of them or something like that. Like, if you pull into the soccer...
You're saying larger signs?
Larger signs that will, like I say, denote, you know, in a more, to show more of the authority of what is governing the use of the facility. And then the signs that Patrick would be able to provide will be basically reminder signs.
If you will, smoke-free policy signs that most likely would include the words, "Use cigarettes" or "NDS." So I would have that to y'all for approval, pleasure, sorry, Alderman Magnus.
Essentially, what would happen is we envisioned it was that as people come into the park, they would see these signs showing enforcement codes applicable for the parks. And then the reminder sign would simply be placed at strategic parts, parts of the park, like at the concession stand, on walkways, through it, you know, various, like the pavilions.
The signage would be their responsibility to see.
Patrick, you wanna write, Rick?
Well, I'd like to say I'm gonna present this to Parks and Rep at their meeting on the, what is it, twentieth? Nineteenth, yeah, the nineteenth.
What time?
Four o'clock.
Okay. Do you have anything else to add?
No, ma'am.
Thank you.
And if you could come to that meeting, I would appreciate it.
Tell me again the date, sir.
The nineteenth, four p.m.
Does anybody have any more discussion? Yes.
It's been many years since I've been to the city council meeting, so this is the point at which I have some things to say, but I don't know, do I wait until the end?
No, feel free, go ahead, just tell us who you are, come in, come on, thank you.
My name is Pat West, and my husband's Don West, and we love to bike around the lake and soccer fields, and we're so appreciative of the planning and the people who plan for that. And we appreciate what the council is doing, trying to control to some extent the smoking problem. Unlike Patrick, my, my concerns are the trash. We pick up cigarette butts, thousands of them, thousands. We used to get ride around, ride around, it's about three miles a couple times, and then get our sacks out and get our gloves on and pick up. But in two days' time, they're behind a concession stand, kind of beside the basketball courts. Are you with me on that beyond, it's just terrible. And that the young people gathered there in the late afternoon, early evening, and you know, they're from fifteen to thirty, probably eighty percent male, and there may be a trash can, like, I pick up all around the bench, you know, an hour and a half, just picking up, both of us, picking up, breaking, picking up, gripping. And it'll be just that much distance, but these, these young people don't have the respect for the property to walk over there and put that cigarette butt in the trash can. And you know, I can pick up, oh, not to exaggerate at all, fifty around that bench every couple days. So we can turn our beautiful park into a landfill very quickly, and I'm sure that all the city workers are so aware of this. And so that's my concern. I just appreciate what y'all are trying to do. I thought about, I have no answers, I, I, when I'm there picking up the butts, if they're there, and a lot of times there, they're just playing basketball, throwing it out the bench, you know, and I'm picking up, the old lady with the light here is picking up. I think it's that awareness, I mean, I just don't think they've been taught that this is, and they may not have that connection to the community, that this is mine, protected. They're not, they're not disrespectful to me. You know, if I sit down, they'll sit, they may not, you know, they'll talk to me. Some male presence, adult male presence down there, a couple hours a night, you know, multiple times a week, maybe with service classes, churches, et cetera. Not to run them off, but to say there's another way to, you know, take care of our property, this is your problem.
Just to empower her statements, and again, around just the playground area, two thousand and eleven, whenever the first ordinance was passed for that area, four and a half one-gallon buckets were collected, that's again, that's around the playground area alone.
It's sad.
I was down there, I think, the Saturday evening, I went, we had a little issue down around the tennis courts. I say issue, it's, it's probably an outdoor thing, but I noticed the same thing you did. There's a trash can right there two feet from you, but it's empty, and there's trash all around. And of course, if an adult walks out there, I got out of my truck and walked out there, and of course, everybody, this is nice, and all get out.
And a little bit of dust in.
But anyway.
Just wanna support you all, maybe we need to say if this continues, we're taking down the basketball things. That's not really the draw, it's just a place to hang out, but they do do them. I don't know what the answer is, but I appreciate what you're doing.
Thank you for...
Ma'am, one of the things we would hope to do with some of this signage is, in key areas like that where we have a problem, kind of saturate that area with temporary signage and nothing else. And that's one of the things that I talked to Patrick about, we wanna have reminder signs, if signage is permanent, but in critical areas, if we have a problem just for a short period of time, that we might be able to, you know, direct their focus a little bit.
Ms. West, thank you for what you do.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
I've never, ever been to a city council meeting, never. I would like to say that I'm gonna put the smoking, all of it, number one, cigarette butts is litter. I do believe we have litter ordinance. I do believe people give me a fine for littering. And if you go down to the playground, you would not believe how many moms and grandmothers leave their ice cream containers and have drank soda popkins sitting on the benches. And I don't know what those moms have as far as disease-wise go, but it is very difficult to have your eighteen-month-old nephew out there and not catch him before he picks up that pop to get a drink out of it. Because an eighteen-month-old, all pops are their pop, any drink. If they're thirsty, it is there. And I mean, I've had to chase them off the stuff that has been left overnight. That park has a problem with litter, period. And I have addressed it with the Parks Department before, and my answer, what I was told was, "Well, there's nothing we can do about it." There is something we can do about litter. People need to learn how to pick up themselves. I'm a disabled lady. If I can pick up my stuff and walk over twenty feet and put it in the trash can, anybody else can do it. I teach my nephews and nieces, "You pick it up." We go to the park, they have to pick up one piece of trash, it is not theirs. We go fishing, same rule. And that's just to instill it. And with the smoking stuff, I mean, we can, we can say that smoking's a horrible thing. We can have a lot everywhere in the world, it's still gonna happen, but there are tons of chemicals we never address in the city. We don't address pesticides, we don't address the chemicals that these plants produce out here, you know, but these plants have our jobs, right? You know, they do. They have our jobs, I mean, that's where we get our money. So it would be horrible to go and say, "You know what, I don't like the amount of stuff that that plant produces, but I don't want you to smoke over here in my city park, because I think that's bad." But we have cars driving around it all day long, tons of cars, you ever see all the cars that drive around city parks all day long? You know what, I've never seen a car in this town get pulled up because it's putting off too much exhaust. So is it really the cigarettes that are the problem? It's all the chemicals, period. And really, I think the city council could really use their time... And really, I think the city council could really do use their time in figuring out how to get some bathrooms at our city parks. I think that's the thing the city council needs to worry about, besides whether we are smoking, whether the kids are cleaning up their trash over there, we need bathrooms. Do you know how bad it is to take five kids to the city park and there ain't one bathroom? Not one bathroom that these kids can go to. And you can't just run one kid to the bathroom. No, you got to load up all five of them kids and get them in a car, and then you got to take them to the bathroom. Now, by the time you get five kids loaded up into a car and only one has to go to the bathroom, the other four don't, now those four kids are mad, because they had to leave the park to go to the bathroom. Well, I'm not gonna go and unload all five of them kids again and drop them off at the park. We're done for that day. You know, we may go to a park another day, first kid has to go to the bathroom, we're done, that's it, we're not going back to the park.
I'm sorry, ma'am, what was your name again?
My name is Tracy Allen, and I am a registered voter for Harrison, I'm a registered voter, period, I've been since the age of eighteen. But I just believe there's a lot of things that this city council can worry about our parks as to whether or not we smoke, whatever, there's a lot of things. There are people that are scared to go jog in our city park in the mornings, early, before work, because they're afraid that somebody's gonna attack them, because there's no, there's no one down there that makes sure that people are safe. You know, and I've asked, how come we can't have, I went to the bars, why can't we have a bicycle car take, take them to the park? Oh, no, we couldn't do that, that would cost too much money. Well, why don't you find the people for littering, and in that way there, you can use the fines for littering to pay for the bicycle car at the city parks? Oh, well, no, we couldn't do that, because how would we know who was doing the littering? You see what I mean? There's, you know, I can go and talk to the Parks Department, I've talked to them three different times about the issue of litter and the issue of restrooms. And I have, one, when I talked to him, he told me it would be too expensive to put bathrooms at the park, you know. And I said, well, you know, there are ways around that. And he said, so we kept talking, and then finally, he goes, well, the guy that has the porta dogs out there, he'll get those to the city for free, he'll set them up, we just have to tell him where we want them, and then he'll throw them, throw them out once a week. Okay, well, hello, where is that big, huge expense of having a porta dog over there at the park? If the guy that owns the porta dogs is gonna drop them off, and he's already said he's willing to pump them out once a week, there's no expense there, you know, there's really none. And then he was like, well, and then, you know, of course, the kids, we'll throw them down in the creek. You know what, I've been to a lot of places, and if they're, if the police are watching the parks, things like that don't happen, but I can go down to that park and I can go fishing from seven o'clock in the evening until three o'clock in the morning and not see one police officer, not one, the whole time. They don't walk through, they don't even hardly drive to the parking lot at this junior high, unless somebody calls them and specifically says, hey, there's kids down there being rowdy on the junior high parking lot. Then they come down there, they run that batch of kids off, and then that batch of kids come up. So, you know, maybe we need to look at enforcing some of the stuff that goes on in, now, I know that it says that the police are walking through our city parks, I've seen them do it two times, two times. I have seen a police officer actually walk part of Lake Harrison City Park on one side, never went to the other side, only on one side.
I agree, there are a lot of issues, and everything you said is valid, but unfortunately, you know, we can only do so much, one thing at a time. And if our budget, you know, was greater, of course, we could address every situation.
Well, I know, well, if I can't smoke at the city parks, I wanna know where my tax money's gonna go, because I pay taxes for this city. I take all my great nieces and nephews to the park. There is one, ninety-five percent of the time, I'm the only one that takes them to the park. Four kids in that family, ninety-five percent of the time, if those kids are at the park, it's because I've taken them. I've got another family that's got two kids, eighty-five percent of the time, when those kids are at the park, it's because I went, I picked them up, and I took them to go to the park through the day. You know what, I can't smoke at the park, there are six kids right there, will never be back in Harrison Park. And that's bad for the kids right there. I'm doing something that's legal, and if I'm taking, I'm taking, throw my cigarette butts away. And my cigarette butts are made out of cotton, not fiberglass. They will go away in less than a week outside, but I throw mine in the trash, because that's the way I was raised, you know. And those kids will not go to the park. When, in the summertime, I have as many as eight kids, all nieces and nephews, great nieces and nephews, I take them to the park. I can't smoke at the park, they ain't going, because I'm not gonna spend all day at the park with kids if I can't have a cigarette every now and then. I don't mind around the playground area, I understand that, I won't walk into the playground area with a cigarette. But if I'm gonna take the kids to the park, I'm gonna be able to, I wanna be able to enjoy my part, and it really is my part, just.
And also, it is the park of the non-smokers also.
Right, and you know what, non-smokers, you know, whenever you go and you go and discuss how much chemicals are allowed to be released into the air, it's always done by a study of parts per billion, every study on how much you put in there. If you're gonna put, say, that chemicals, a chemical or substance is bad in the air where everybody breathes, it's always done by parts per billion, per million, per trillion, or whatever. It's not done by, oh, no, we absolutely don't do that at all. So what you're saying is, it's okay for a certain amount of radiation to be used in the city or released in the city, because that's all right, it's acceptable by parts per billion, but we can't have any cigarette smoke at all? That's kind of ridiculous.
We do appreciate your comments, we really do appreciate your comments, and we will take it under consideration. Thank you very much.
I don't, I really do. No, but I don't do.
Anybody else got anything else to say?
No, these are edited, that's all.
Yeah, on section three, under part A, the last two, or the last word on parts one and two, needs to be corrected on the spelling instead of CE to SE.
It's all about the word.
Or, I don't know how to use spell check, I guess. So one, two, and three needs to say OFM E and SE instead of CE. It'll be fixed. Now, we need to vote on this to take it to full council.
Make the motion to take it to council.
Do I have a second? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, we'll take it to full council. And...
You have a, also, I gave you guys a resolution that will need to be addressed with the next meeting, ratifying the tax mileage for 2015. I just gave you a copy of the last year's resolution, should basically be the same thing.
Just an annual housekeeping.
And it needs, needs to be done.
Magazine that Dan showed me that article in, it has up to five mil. Is it adding all of these up to get that, or is it the four point eight?
I don't know, we'll check it out.
Okay.
Your, your one mil on the fire department was part of a, an election, it was part of a ballot.
This is the one.
So you're saying the only, the only, of these millages, these three millages, only one applies to that five percent, and be the, the corporate mileage that's costing?
Yes, that's what's loose.
The other two are approved by both, of the people.
Yeah, last, last year, you did that.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
All right.
All opposed? Okay. What's going forward? Jeff did carry the board.
We're going around.
That's all I have, mayor.
Thank you. Anybody wanna bring up any old business? Maybe we'll move on to new business, and we have a, I don't say it's a full-length picture, but we have a video. Moscow, this is what I did, maybe a little strange type thing, but Moscow wanted on the agenda, and we put the agenda out, and since that time, Moscow has been put in hospital, and our thoughts and prayers go out to him, he has, I think, a blood clot on his lung, and he is, he wanted this, he wanted to be here first, but Mrs. Ross is in her, is placed, now, I won't say anything, she looks a lot better, I didn't say, I didn't go say anything. She has made a video of Moscow, him wanting to put his point out to the council tonight. So we will see that video, and I'm sorry, you can't ask questions.
Can I, can I say just a few things?
Yes.
Okay. I, like, like, mayor said, I'm here on, tonight on behalf of Moscow Cash, and like he said, he wanted to be here, but due to unforeseen circumstances, he's not gonna be able to be here. I asked him if he wanted me to speak for him, and of course, he said no, he wanted to speak for himself. So that is why he did not wanna wait until November, that's why it was important for him to do it now. So tonight, I have a video of Mr. Cash, and I understand, I took it, so it ain't the best thing, you know, but, and his request to bring back the four lane, and what he is prepared to do to make that happen for his neighbors and friends on Main Street. So I'm not positive, but this is probably the first time you've seen a question video, so that's all I have to say. Thank you so much.
Go ahead. You need to put speaker up there.
The last time I was here, well, I was told that the city didn't have the money to re-strike it, so I raised the money, and, and, so I hope you didn't, that you take consideration of these people, that this has affected and what it's hurting, hurting the downtown and hurting the people that's on the Main Street. So I hope you accept this and, and be interested in the city and in the people. I've told them that the, back, used to, there was three people to the car, and when they, when they cut the traffic down across there, they cut two-thirds of the potential customers off of the, off of the downtown, downtown people, or customers, I mean, stores. And, and I have had, I've had more people that have called me on the phone and have met me on the street, so I told them I'm raising money to strike this, since they can't do it. And we're, I had one man gave me a dollar, another gave me fifty dollars, another gave me a hundred dollars, and we've got almost enough money to paper that, and, and I'm gonna finish it out, whatever it takes. So that's, that's, that's all I can tell them, if they don't, don't accept that and consider that, but I just, I'm doing this for the people that's on the, on the, on this main street and the people downtown, and if somebody doesn't help them, they, they, some of them are gonna go out of business. And we ensure they need, they need some help, and I tell you, that's, that's what I'm trying to do, I'm trying to help my friends and my neighbors and, to, so they, they can stay in business and make a living.
Within that, I don't know if anybody kept their main estimate, but anybody keep me... I don't know, he didn't put in within that video there what, the aspect of these three layouts, he didn't say anything about that. He just, he was adamant about making his presentation tonight, but, of course, I would, I would probably have some questions for him, and you all probably would too, but we've heard his presentation, and that's the main thing, so. I'd say we probably, we probably aren't gonna take any action, I'd say, so. She might got anything you wanna say, ma'am?
I would like to ask him to thank Mr. Cash for his time and his thoughts. Personally, I'm sure I speak for everyone, hopefully gets the opinion better.
Well, it was important enough for him to bring it tonight, and I think he had mentioned the fact, maybe twenty-three thousand or something for striking at the time, he mentioned to me, that that's only the reason he brought it to me. He just felt like if y'all weren't able to do it, he would do it for me.
That would be a second option. First option is four lane from Central to Spruce. Second option is Prospect to Spruce, and that cost estimate was twenty-three, two-fifty. Third option is, told it, no, it's Bauer to Spruce, that's twenty thousand, I don't know what's wrong. He didn't say, so, but he's giving you a cost estimate?
Twenty, he said twenty-thirty, that's only that thing I really do say.
So I'd say Prospect to Spruce is probably what he's looking at.
November dates in December.
Okay, probably, we don't, I know we're getting voted on this tonight, but we need to look, now we gotta cover it up there, I guess we're open. Our November, December council dates, we need to think about that. November being Thanksgiving. For y'all, if y'all meet on Thanksgiving day, I might be absent, but I would be thinking, if I can throw a suggestion out there, could we meet the week before?
I can do that.
That's gonna throw us two meetings, we're up, without committee meetings, we'll be on the council meeting the next week.
And so, thank you. Could be the nineteenth, or I'm sorry, twelve, nineteenth, I'm sorry.
Eleven, nineteen?
Twelve, nineteenth.
Oh, we're talking November here, I'm sorry.
November, right, twelve and nineteenth, Thursday nights.
Both of them, okay, the twelfth is on November, is in November, I think. And the nineteenth?
November, next, that's the two back-to-back Thursdays.
Yeah. Okay.
He said twenty-sixth is Thanksgiving. Twenty-fourth, oh, you're right. It skipped around too fast. All right, yeah, that works for me, and you're looking at the seventeenth on the next one in December.
Yes.
I have no issue with that either. Both work fine with me.
Y'all got your camera now, I guess I can get mine.
Nineteen.
For November? Up for November?
For November?
That would be the change of the council, actual council meeting. If we go to the nineteenth.
The other option, which a lot of people go out of town, would be that Tuesday beforehand.
I'm sure there's gonna be a lot of people out of town during that one.
Schools, schools out the twenty-fourth. Or Monday the twenty-third. I have no problem with twelve and nineteen, or nineteen.
We'll have to vote, we'll have to vote on that the next week.
On the seventeenth in December?
Well, we won't necessarily have to vote on the December one, but it'd probably make it easier if we did both at the same time.
I was gonna go ahead and knock them out. We're gonna move on. That is correct, Amanda. That is number thirty-five, that twenty-fourth, so.
You're nothing but a beginner.
I know.
Okay, everybody kinda agreed on the nineteenth, the changing, changing meeting in November from the twenty-sixth to the nineteenth.
Yes.
Twenty-seventh's our anniversary.
Not going anywhere.
Okay. Look at December.
Seventeenth looks good.
Seventeenth looks good.
I remember now. You could have the meeting on the regular schedule, huh?
No.
Oh, oh.
Bill can't be here.
No.
In December.
No.
You'd be wearing a red suit, wouldn't you?
No.
Seventeenth? Are we picking another day on that?
I'm gonna do the seventeenth. You can't do the seventeenth either. The seventh?
I have the first and third obligations.
Okay. Well, I mean, I'm fine with another day if that would work better and just puts it closer. I'm fine with the, that Thursday that we mentioned, the area, that Tuesday before that Thursday. Maybe it would accommodate our two guys over here.
May I ask a question, since we're discussing this and, and, you know, we run into situations all the time, but we've gotta be gone. I'm gonna be gone just about the whole month of March. However, I'm easily accessible by telephone. When I sat on the school board, we passed a policy for the school board, because the state allowed it for even, I couldn't sit in at a executive. Exactly. I could call in.
You can't vote. You can listen.
Is that state, is that state policy? I'm really curious because, because we did it.
Then I think they changed it. I don't think you can do the school anymore either.
Okay. And if they have, it's fine, because when I was on the board, we went there because we had two board members that were on the road a lot. And they were able to call in, conduct business, be there. They just accidentally physically sat.
I looked at the book, and I'm pretty sure that has not been checked. But you have to be present.
Gotta be present. So I think the change in the, for a school board, city school board member has to be present physically.
It's unfortunate.
If they're not listening, I was...
Okay, but it, it really, it's unfortunate that, you know, because we all have jobs. Well, some of us have jobs. But you're out of town on council day tonight, and you still meet your obligation to be able to be there.
It's gonna happen. It's gonna happen.
I only ask because if, if we can't, we can't.
I, I would like to see if, if the fifteenth would work for everybody in December, because if, if we got two aldermen, the same one's gonna be missing anyway, if we could accommodate them. Would, would that Tuesday work for everybody in December, the fifteenth? Won't work for you either. Just trying to make sure we get as much as we can here for the guys.
Maybe I could vote for Bill.
I'm good fifteen or seven. The only, I'm out the twenty-fourth of December.
Okay, well, okay. Well, neither one's gonna work for, for Ron, then seventeen's fine with me. I just thought if we could accommodate, get more here.
And that December meeting's gonna be pretty critical anyway, at least it's a lot of budget to consider that night.
I hope we have it pulled in.
Me too.
Here's a suggestion, and it may not work for anybody at all. But just for December, the committee meeting to the third and the council meeting to the tenth, that Ryan, you're gonna be gone anyway. Because it's a Thursday.
You could definitely do the tenth.
I mean, it's just a suggestion, just for that one month.
That, that would be fine. I may move everything up. I'm fine.
Thank you.
It would be difficult if I could just take the November by the tenth. I'll just let you know.
With that case, I can move to the, the third kids to the Thursday.
I mean, it's whatever everybody wants. It was just something that I thought I wanted.
So our December would be the...
Committee would be the third and the council would be the...
Well, it wouldn't work if we can't get funding until it's in town. Which is what?
I, I can try to get it by the tenth, I'm just not... I agree, they're gonna be...
So we've had some difficulty getting them. In our current format, I'd have to get them.
We don't wanna do any meetings the week of Christmas, right?
I'll be in, I'll be in town.
So then you're, and you're gone. And you're gone too.
Only other thing to do is if you just moved up the time during the day, that before the thing went on.
I like giving the tenth option.
We just gotta make sure that...
I, I can, I try as hard as I can to get as much in the, to sell the apartment ads. I'll just sell the apartment ads as quick as I can.
Well, if you let them know now, they can start finding you hopefully.
I'll not spend anything the last week of November. Spending free, that's right. You can't spend anything the week before.
We should, look at, go back and look at that one. It won't be much for this Thanksgiving.
Well, I can work with anything, whatever y'all say.
I'm good except for that week of Christmas, so thanks for the Christmas.
And shoot for the third, isn't it?
You may, I don't have a problem.
Kids for the mayor, knock it out early, be done with it before they get to be here.
You're gonna have much trouble if you all want to put on the gym. You know that idea?
Well, there's been a lot of Decembers where we didn't have two meetings anyway. You know, we just had a council meeting and canceled the committee meeting, so.
If we can get that budget out of the way, and there's nothing else left.
And that might be the best idea right there is...
You know, if all of you were planning on being there for committee anyway, what if you just switched the committee to council and then...
Just tell the council meeting didn't do it.
Didn't have a committee meeting that month unless you felt there was some kind of urgent, urgent business.
Or if the committee meeting was before, and just moved...
We've done that too.
Just moved the committee meeting.
Back-to-back?
Back-to-back. Put it on the same day, knock it out.
That would work too.
Well, let's, I think you can wait, wait on the December one. Of course, we'll probably know more about it on the nineteenth in November. By that time, we can make a decision. Hopefully that budget is in front of you. The fact I know it's gonna be in front of you.
Should be. We're hoping to have other, uh, numbers on Monday. Of course, we've been hoping for actual numbers for a long time. But she said she would call back on Monday with hopefully good numbers, accurate numbers, I'll say. I won't say good, but I'll say accurate.
All right, we'll move on. Down to the last item there on it. Do we have anybody in the audience that'd like to approach the council this time? That being said, I guess...